All right, we will call the order. We've got a joint meeting between the Grand Forks City Council and Grand Forks School Board. With that, can we get a welcome, everybody? And can we get a roll call, Sherri, please? If you could do both, is that all right with the school board? She just does, hammers out both? Go ahead.
Okay. Weigel?
Here.
Dockler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Muck? Kavami? Sandy? Bean?
Here.
Okay. Quorum of City Council President. School Board Lund? Flynn?
Here.
Carpenter?
Yeah.
Delphet?
Here.
Hasset?
Here.
Monley?
Here.
Micula?
Here.
Pomassino?
Here.
Shab?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I just wanted to open with a few comments, and I was going to hand it over to Vice President Flynn as well for... I had a longer one written, but I'll shorten it just due to time. Just really wanted to thank everybody for being here. This is the first co-meeting that I've been able to be a part of. Pretty exciting. I think a lot of us are in the same boat. It's been a tough, pretty tough eighteen months. We've been all dealing with phone calls, emails, sub-toll hours in nights, hearing probably being called things that you wouldn't normally talk about around a supper table. But we've taken it in stride, and I think the community is doing well and looking to the future. And quite frankly, everybody's still here. Nobody's given up through all this, and I think that's something to be proud of. And we're looking at another, possibly another battle coming up here this fall. And we've got a group in this room that's willing to stand up and do what needs to be done. So I want to thank everybody for that. On a positive note, I just, I really think it's exciting. You look around town to see not only the excitement going on, but all the development, all the projects. And now getting into fall, there's just a, there's optimism in the air with a new school year and just the excitement from kids and all the learning. And I think you can feel it throughout the community on a lot of different fronts. And I'm really excited to work with the school district and the school board even better than the past and continue to move things forward. So thank you, everybody, for being here. With that, Amber, you've got to try to beat that, so here you go.
Well, Aki, my comment's brief. Thank you for inviting us into your space today. It's a really neat opportunity, I think, for both of our boards to collaborate and be together in the same room. There's a lot of stuff that we can watch from afar or learn from afar, but it's a lot different when you're having some of the same conversations to a common goal, which is a better community for everyone who lives here and works here and plays here. So I'm excited to continue our conversations, to hopefully maintain a collaboration as we learn more about how our community is headed in a direction that has a lot of opportunities for the city and the school district and see if there's opportunities for great collaboration. So thanks again for having us here today.
Thank you. Do you have something to add, Mr. Phelan? You're good? All right. You reached for that thing, too. Discussion items, so we'll go right to, into 2.1, Career Technical Education Center Briefing and Discussion. And we've got a presentation.
No, we're not going to do a presentation on this one, Mayor. Just because everyone has seen this presentation, we want to do death by PowerPoint, so we're going to spare you that. And so I think what we want to do on this first item is to have an opportunity for the city and our school colleagues, and then we have our EDC colleagues here to talk about this opportunity. And so this is a classic example of, we probably forgot during, to engage the city, the city council engaging the school board on things regarding workforce. And as Keith Lund often says, and he says, you know, the two moves that we have to start economic development moves are number one, we've got a great K-12 education system, and we have a great healthcare system provider in Grand Forks. So if you don't have those fundamentals, there's not a whole lot else we can do to blur things, and we have some really great economic development opportunities. So I think as part of that workforce, and so the first item is a current technical education center discussion on workforce. And just from the city's perspective, we've attached a staff report where the jobs development authority, the other arm of the city council, has approved moving forward with supporting this initiative, and not just words, but in deeds. And deeds are often revolve around money and investment. So I think you have a jobs development authority, again, it's in the title, jobs, and workforce would support this. And lo and behold, what we have found is our K-12, our Grand Forks Public Schools is really at the center of this. And perhaps shame on us that we haven't engaged to more and more on economic development opportunities like the one we're going to talk to. So I think the city in particular is willing to invest, and we've talked about location, we've talked about we're partnering. Mayor is going to be part of the selection panel for the RFP for engineering and architectural services. So we're willing to partner on that and maybe even help fund some of those initial opportunities. And we know we have a big lift with, in a short amount of time, to raise ten million, to raise the state's ten million dollars. And as Governor Burgum has explicitly told us, Grand Forks better not fail. And so that means we're not going to fail in this regard. So there's only one way out in that success. So I think with that, that's kind of where, how we got in here, and we want to be supportive of what the school district's trying to do. And I would say, school district, you have to submit the application, but the whole community has to be behind you on this. And the only reason why you have to submit it is that's what the law says you have to do. And so with that, I turn it over to Terry and Eric and Chris, and then we'll have our EDC colleagues kind of chime in and just have some discussions about what we can do to help support October 1 deadlines or December 1 deadlines.
Thank you, Todd. Terry Brenner, Superintendent, Grand Forks Public Schools. First of all, I just want to proclaim here in front of the council and also in front of our community that Grand Forks Public Schools and myself as superintendent is behind this initiative. We couldn't be more pleased to be at the table, being part of this collaborative opportunity between the city, industry, business leaders, UND, Northland Tech, Lake Region State College, and other stakeholders as well. So, you know, timing is always something that we can't control, but the timing is now and the timing is in front of us. And I think I've heard this stated about three different times, that there isn't always an opportunity where the state is going to participate and fund, equally fund, in standing up a career academy. And it was probably about just short of fifty years ago when the feds put a lot of money behind Carl Perkins and Career and Technical Education programs. So we've been standing up all those courses ever since, basically on the district's dime and on some federal dollars that come through Executive Director Eric Ripley's department. But we're really proud of the program that we presently have. We have about seventy-three CTE courses. But what we've learned through the research and the surveying and finding out where the workforce shortages are in Grand Forks is maybe not all the courses are feeding the workforce pipeline. And that's really what we've learned. So we're ready to stand up some programs that will support the city. We want to be part of the economic engine of Grand Forks, want to be a team player. I learned three years ago when I went to the legislature with Team Grand Forks that there's a lot of synergy between, among leaders in Grand Forks, and I'm proud to be part of that and certainly be proud to see this reach the finish line on October 1st, if not October 1st, then December 1st. So Todd, I think I would turn it back to you, but I do know that Eric is at the table, and he can speak programmatically. I just want to mention a couple of other names, because Vice President Flynn serves on one of the subcommittees on the Engagement Committee. And Assistant Superintendent Catherine Galach, myself and Eric Ripley serve on the Steering Committee. And Chris Arnold, our Buildings and Grounds Director, serves on the Facilities Committee. And he's also the one who's procured the RFP for applications. And Dr. Lund, President of the Board, sits on the Governing and Budget Committee as well. So I will turn it back to my colleagues to the left.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Eric Ripley, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education and Technology for Grand Forks Public Schools and the Grand Forks Area Career Technology Center. And I had the privilege, distinct privilege, to present to the city council a couple weeks ago and talk a little bit about how the concept that we're talking about here with this CT center is really going to expand and build upon the success that we've had with a concept referred to as a virtual area center, which is something that we've done for the last ten years. And so we have, right now, established what's called the Grand Forks Area Career and Technology Center. But that's delivering just online coursework to seven neighboring school districts and students within the Grand Forks Public Schools. What we've learned through that experiment is some courses deliver themselves well in that environment, and there are courses in CTE because of the hands-on nature and specialized equipment that just do not deliver themselves well in that environment. And at the same time, to piggyback on Dr. Brenner's comments, we want to make sure that those courses are lined up with a pathway to post-secondary education and training that then feeds our regional workforce demands and needs. And so that's what's really exciting about this opportunity, is funding potentially available through the state and local partnership to invest in the facilities and the equipment necessary to really grow and expand our CTE courses for our students, not only at Grand Forks, but the surrounding communities as well. There is a Steering Committee, as Dr. Brenner referenced, and then five subcommittees working off of that Steering Committee. And I can certainly speak towards the Programming Committee, because I'm hoping to chair that. The Programming Committee is being responsible for looking at what coursework and what offerings would be provided underneath of that CTE center umbrella. You know, what courses, and really think about it this way, we have existing courses that are being taught at Red River and Central and our rural schools. Which of those courses makes sense to stay there? Which courses potentially should move to a CT center concept? And what courses are we not currently offering that maybe, again, is that gap in that industry demand that we can help fulfill and start providing some career awareness at the high school level? That really is the main focus of that committee. We're making, we're making some great strides within that, a lot of community partnership, post-secondary partners at the table, helping us kind of work through that conversation. The other committee that I'm intimately involved with is the Governance and Budget Committee. And Mr. Phelan is kind enough to chair that committee for us. And what we're looking at is essentially, at the end of the day, who owns the building and who governs the building? And certainly a lot of questions, rightfully so, about sustainability of the center, not only upfront costs, but ongoing programming costs. As, again, Dr. Brenner indicated, we have a number of CT staff already employed by the Grand Forks Public Schools. If we take those staff from Red River and Central, put them under a third location, if that's what's ultimately determined, the staffing cost would be relatively neutral, because you're already paying for those staffs. New costs, though, would certainly be new programs, new instructors, and obviously building maintenance, which is something that a new facility would bring. So those are, again, important questions, reasonable questions to be asked of. And my colleague, Mr. Arnold, can talk a little bit more about the facilities process and kind of what's coming up with our RFP. So, Mr. Arnold?
Chris Arnold, Director of Buildings and Grounds. So as Eric alluded to, I'm on the Facilities Committee for this process. We're just kind of working through the process of site selection and have started with the four sites that were identified earlier. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of those, the old Sears location, there's an industrial park location, I think it's near the FedEx building. There's the location next to Red River, which would be an expansion. And then there's the former Grand Forks Inn and Suites location. The committee kind of worked on, kind of figuring out each site has its pluses and minuses. There's a lot of concern and focus on how do we keep our numbers up, as Eric alluded to, having an off-site location and making sure that we get those kids to and from, for our students here in Grand Forks Schools, but also for other neighboring schools. So we have factors such as how we're going to get buses there, how we're going to get semis in there for our industrial partners, and then how are we going to get kids enrolled into that? So that process is working through. At the same time, we are also working through the RFP process. We are accepting bids the end of this week. In fact, we'll be interviewing selected firms on this Thursday morning and hope to have everything ready to go for the next school board meeting next week.
All right. With that, I think Keith, if you want to give us an update, specifically probably if industry investment outlook type of thing, but I want to say thank you to you for being willing to engage on this and writing that grant to be able to go and take a look at some of these buildings. So appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mayor Vesensky. Vice President Flynn, School Board Member, City Council Members, pleasure to be here with you this evening. Appreciate the kind words, Mayor. I would like to recognize, obviously, everyone in this room that's leaning into this, specifically Becca Kruger and Eric Ripley, who really are the leadership on the ground for this initiative. So really want to acknowledge that. I'll give some overarching comments. Becca's going to provide an overview of the work of the other subcommittees that haven't been addressed, and we'll talk about the industry engagement, and that's coming up here in the next couple of weeks. But I just want to start by saying that we, one of the groups is industry engagement, public engagement, and Becca's chairing that. But we provide presentations to the Growth Fund and to the Jobs Development Authority, the School Board, County Commission, BGEA, and the EDC Advisory Board. And I have to say that there is strong support for this initiative moving forward. And I think there's a strong recognition of some of the workforce challenges that we have in our region. And it's not unique to Grand Forks, but the difference in the impact that investment like this can make. So I appreciate the support of the community. I also appreciate the support of the Herald in getting the word out. I saw her here, so there she is. We're working very hard. We have a couple of deadlines. We've given the presentation, as Todd alluded to, so we're not going to walk through that again, but it's included in your packet for reference. We have, the state has a couple of deadlines, October 1st is the first one, and we're aggressively pursuing to see if we can reach that, acknowledging that we're not going to submit an application that isn't compelling. So, and there's a strong recognition, too, that the leaders that need to make a decision on this have to have some time to hear it once, absorb it, ask questions, come back and act on it. So we're going to be working as aggressively as we can, and hopefully we can make October 1st, but I'm not here to promise you that. But we're going to be working as hard as we can. We've talked about a couple of different subcommittees that are put together to really see this through. Governance and budget has been referenced, facilities has been referenced, curriculum has been referenced. I chair the Industry Engagement and Fundraising Committee, which is going to be extremely important, as all of them are. And then Becca, as I tried to say it, but Community Engagement and Public Relations, which is equally important. I want to also mention, we've talked about investments, and the EDC, at least at this point, is investing not just in Becca's time and my time and our staff's time, but we've actually dedicated some resources to hire someone to help coordinate the activities and facilitate the activities of those subwork, those working groups. There's five of them. There's a lot of information that really, quite frankly, are going to be the foundation for that grant application. Each one of those subcommittees is working on something that's extremely important. We have a lot of work to do in addition to this, so we thought that was important to bring in additional resources to help coordinate that. So that is in place right now. I'll give a quick update in terms of my committee, since that's how we've been happening here. We've identified ninety companies, give or take, that we'd like to get information in front of. We are going to be talking to manufacturing, agribusiness, and transportation companies in one meeting next week, construction trades, architecture and engineering in another, EAS and technology in a third, healthcare in a fourth, and then banking, finance, and government in a fifth. Really, the goals of those briefings are, number one, to make sure those industries, the people in those industries understand what we're doing and the challenges and the impact that we're trying to have. Number two, we want to get feedback from them in terms of what curriculum, what training could be developed that would have the most impact positively on their, on their, on their industry, considering the fact that, even though it's going to be broader than that, I think the majority of the users are going to be high school students. So we want to make sure that we have the feedback from them. And then honestly, we want to sort of get some feedback in terms of which organizations are, you know, really leaning forward and have the potential to invest in this. We've talked about it before, but the state has provided up to ten million dollars. We intend to be aggressive. That requires a one-to-one match, so if we're going to do that, ten million dollars, this has to be raised locally. There's multiple sources, but industry is going to be a part of that. So we want to make sure that we're talking to them early and often and able to secure the amount of investment in the project as we possibly can. So high-level update, I know Becca's got a little bit more to add, but we're really thrilled to be at the table and with so many community leaders moving this agenda forward.
So you can see, since last we've been here, we've hit the ground running, working very hard on those five different working groups and multitudes of partners who are at the table to drive this forward towards that October 1 grant. So the, the subcommittee that I am chairing is the Community Engagement and Public Relations Subcommittee. One thing that we heard from our neighboring cities who are also working on this is that talking about this early and often is very important, and engaging the community throughout as we're developing programs that are going to directly impact them is very important. Some of the work that we have started doing is reaching out to our rural school districts. John Mouse, the Superintendent of Thompson Public Schools, has already said he's very excited to sign a memorandum of understanding to support this project. Just as a reminder for those of you who aren't directly embedded in the notice of funding availability, we do have to have at least six school districts sign on to support this in order to be awarded preference points for our application. So that's one thing we're working on, is that rural school district engagement. And how does that look for those communities? Are there internships that could be developed within those communities as well? For example, Northwoods Deaconess Health Center. And then also, things like parent engagement is going to be very important. We do have to hammer out some options for programming before we're going to look for that feedback from parents. So that's something that will be coming probably next month, I would say. And then, you know, so we also have to consider industry in terms of being awarded preference points for engagement as well. So as Keith said, those, those industry engagements sessions are going to be key as we move forward. So that's where we stand on some community engagement.
Sounds good. I think with that, we should open up the discussion. I think there's probably, two of the largest issues is obviously raising the money, but then the ongoing operations and maintenance is going to be, I'm sure, a big topic and very important. So I hope the Governing and Finance Committee is going to be on that and have a great plan, because I think that's everyone's going to want to hear. I guess with that, I'll open up to discussion. Anybody has any comments? Not everybody go first.
Mr. Mayor FMA?
Yeah, Mr. Weber, please.
Mr. Phelan, you're chairing the committee that's looking at different revenue sources. Can I just be blunt? What are we looking for from the city and what sources would we have for our funding?
Councilmember Weber, I think the one item is probably one-time investment in helping procure a site and to build the site. I think that would be the one thing, kind of a one-time investment. I think a secondary investment on behalf of the community is certainly, the city of Grand Forks has six hundred employees that a lot of them work in the field and do real things day-to-day and just don't work in an office. So those are people in public safety and public works and water works, public health. And so I think the city will have an investment, because certainly we have our own workforce in all these similar areas where they're related to industry or public health or public safety. So I think that's our ongoing, helping to support the mission of this as we move forward as part of training and education. And so I think it's a dual-fold thing that we have a one-time investment to get this going. And then a secondary and long-term investment within the city of Grand Forks and our own folks. And Mayor, I would defer to Mr. Ripley, who has a great answer on that. The state has funding and federal has funding on the operating side of that, and I think that will help augment kind of the sustainability of this particular project, too.
So if I could just follow up on that. So the one-time, possibly with the location, we can come back to that. And then the sustainable aspect of this, are you talking in kind, in some form? Or would this be an annual contribution? What would the sustainable aspect look like?
Mr. Weber, I think the sustainability, similar to anyone else, say, you worked at JR Simplot, and, you know, we have X amount of employees, you're going to have, there's going to be some sort of per capita funding formula, right? And so certainly, if we want to direct certain programs and we're going to have certain, you know, workforce development things that we may want to participate in that, because similar to what we do with our UND internship program, where we've been able to hire, you know, several employees, this would be another avenue where we would be able, from the bottom up, attract people that work in our electrical divisions and our water divisions and our public works with CDL operators, trying to build our workforce from within and trying to capture them early, just like John Oaken would want to do at True North. I think the city of Grand Forks would have a similar way, where we want to be strategic in that way, too.
And this is kind of a discussion we'd normally have just with family, but we're wanting to be collaborative here. I'm guessing these would be economic development dollars, is what we're thinking, yes?
It would be.
Perhaps a conversation with the Growth Fund Chair would be in order.
Yes. And the one-time, is that dependent upon location, then? I mean, we have a location where we seem to be able to offer more assistance than others, yeah?
I think we'd be looking at that one time, whether it's a location or a match of that dollar amount. If it doesn't end up being that location, that location gets sold, I think we'd be looking probably in around that one million dollar amount. And then if there's a, you know, an ongoing, you think about the Growth Fund and your growing workforce and the jobs development, you know, essentially the Jobs Development Authority, I think it's, fits in that narrative pretty well if we're looking at some type of ongoing, similar to the Nissler building and what we're doing there.
And we have some federal dollars that could be applied to this also?
We do have federal, and we have obviously our local economic development. I think if Keith would, I don't think you'll mind me saying that, it's ten million dollars. I think a realistic ask to get to the ten million dollars, it would be half from the public and half from the private. And because, you know, when the surveys come back, there's more strength in private sector to have the public sector invest in this than to have themselves invest in this. So it tells me there's a will among the private sector to, for communities like Grand Forks to invest in that. So I think if Keith could accomplish getting investment up to that five million from public sector entities and then the other half from industry, I think would be a good goal.
Keith, did you have a, do you have a breakdown of where Fargo ended up with their, their private versus public, like a percentage or just a rough estimate?
Mayor, I think it's around fifteen million. It's a thirty million dollar project, is what my, is my recollection right now. They had some EDA funding in there, and they had some county support as well. And those specific numbers escaped me, but it's around that.
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Ripley, he could kind of just discuss how these things are sustainable, ongoing right now.
Sure. Thank you. So to your question, Mr. Weber, the, the, really, the costs of this project are truly twofold, right? It's the capital campaign to stand up a facility, regardless if that's an addition or a new build or retrofit. I mean, there's obviously a capital campaign to get that going. We do have some existing equipment, you know, if I take a look at some programs that we have, and maybe it's a relocation of that equipment, that helps offset that. But certainly, new equipment, new programs would require some of that as well. As far as the ongoing expense, the State Department of CTE is, has a history of funding partially staffing costs, which are primarily the largest expense of any education program, is the cost of the staff. And so it varies by program, but on average, it's roughly fifty percent of a staff's ongoing salary and benefits is covered by the Department of Career and Technical Education at the state level. And so that helps a little bit. It doesn't offset it completely, obviously. To date, the local share of that, if it's the school district, it's obviously the school district's responsibility. If it's the area center, the virtual, it's a combination of those eight member school districts that are helping to support the cost of those staff members at that percentage. I do want to reference that this building is being sought as more of a, of a, less of an eight-to-five K-12 building and more of a community building, right? And with that, potentially, we have some opportunities for funding streams that we don't have access to. For example, it's been referenced, Lake Region State College, I think rents four different locations here in the town. They are very interested in consolidating and putting some of their programs underneath of a CT center. You know, that provides potentially a revenue source that isn't there currently. We think of adult education, community offerings, specialized training programs, et cetera, that this facility could be used for. I think that will also be helpful in sustainability.
You might also be able to help me understand. So we're talking five million public, five million private, matched by the state, twenty million dollars. Is that the magic number? Is that what we need? Because we have both the building and equipment, there's other aspects to it. Does twenty million get us to where we need to be?
That's, that's a great question. I think that there's a ballpark figure of what a CTE square foot of space goes for. And that ballpark number is around two hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. So if you take twenty million dollars, and that includes the equipment, the machines, et cetera, you're looking at roughly about a seventy thousand foot square facility. I think programming really drives how much space you need. And I'll use automotive, for example, the lab space for automotive bays is different than what you would need for an information technology classroom, right? So it's a little bit of that, you know, chicken and the egg, which one comes first? Does programming drive the size of the facility? Yes, would be my answer. But ultimately, I think at the end of the day, we probably will not be able to fit every program in there that we want. I think one of the metrics that's being used for facilities is the ability to expand, if there is a need in the future to expand, because there may be programs in the future that are not currently existing that we want to be able to incorporate.
Very good. Thanks.
I have all my cards on the table now, I'll just leave. Thanks. All right. Anybody else want to offer something? Ms. Dockler?
I'm wondering, it's great to hear about the public-private partnerships that you've reached out to and that you've secured and the ongoing conversations, but what kind of engagement have you done with the student population? of engagement have you done with the student population to know that they want to go and they want to engage in these programs? I guess that's what I'm interested in hearing.
Yeah, that is a great question and something that I overlooked. So thank you, Councilwoman Dockler. As part of the process, we've already worked with Praxis Strategy Group to do a student survey. And so that was indicating what types of programming and careers they're interested in. We did that for Grand Forks Public Schools students. And this fall, we will also be doing that for all of our rural school districts as well. By the time the survey was developed earlier this spring, the rural school districts were already out of session. And so we needed to do that this fall. So we'll be looking at that. And then also engaging students as we go along in the process in the same format that we would be engaging parents as we're looking at different programs and what to call them and all that sort of thing. And that's something that we certainly learned from our site visits is naming a program is very important for students. And additionally, we also have student-run organizations that are specifically for career and technical education. And so we've engaged them along the process as well to be part of our steering committee, so.
Thank you. And then just one more question, too. As far as success for our students that would complete courses through the CTE program, what are we looking at? What are the kind of measure of success that we'd be wanting? Have we compared other school districts that are doing this already? What percentage, I guess?
Sure. That's a great question. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, at the secondary level, my belief is that students are going to need something beyond high school to be able to have a competitive advantage when they enter the workforce. I just believe that that next step for them is a variety of options available depending upon the career pathway and occupation. So whether it's a certificate program, one-year, two-year, four-year advanced degree, it really runs the gamut, could be on-the-job training, apprenticeship programs. And that's why it's exciting to have three post-secondary partners at the table. We have Lake Region State College in Devils Lake, which only has a presence here in the Grand Forks area. We have University of North Dakota, and we have Northland Community and Tuckville College in East Grand Forks. And all three are at the table helping us to make sure that the programs that are being selected have a pathway to what is that next step for the student. So really, at the secondary level, how can we make that student aware of the opportunities available and the connections? And how can we seamlessly then transition that into the next step through things like dual-credit arrangements, articulation, internship opportunities, et cetera? A terminology that's used a lot at the state level is the term "choice-ready." Are students ready to make an educated choice of their future after high school? It would certainly be a goal of ours that our students going through whatever pathway that would be developed under the center will certainly emerge to be choice-ready. We can show with our current CTE programs that students that are engaged in two or more credits in a single pathway are significantly more highly ready to graduate high school. Doesn't necessarily predict their post-secondary placement, but certainly would say that they're going to complete high school because they found a passion area that aligns with their interests and abilities, and that will then see them through at least the finish line of high school.
How many students are, oh, who's that? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add, a few of the tours we went to, there's a variety of different ways where they collected hard data and anecdotal data. So, you know, certainly job unemployment rates and how that's tracked in terms of those who wish to go right from high school into the workforce. There is, you know, certainly mental health aspects that can play a positive role in having options available for students in certain passion areas. But there was a lot of programs who interworked the experience of what CTE is and engaging those alumni from those programs. So they were calling all of the students a year after they graduated, getting their feedback, understanding, where do you work? Did you go to college? And so I think one of the important things to whoever owns the building doesn't mean that that collaborative advisory board has to stop. And I think that's what we're really looking at, is having an ongoing advisory capacity where some of these conversations and these subcommittees are existing to really talk about what are the data pieces that we can glean from it when we're making decisions, where, you know, there's an advisory board helping to guide whoever quote-unquote owns it. But we're really doing it in a collaborative fashion because it's starting from the ground up that way, so.
If I could add, Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Ripley when we developed the Northern Valley Correctpo with a number of other partners at the table. And so the EDC's role on that was bringing industry to the table because it was, it's a workforce initiative, but Eric and his teams and his colleagues brought the educational component to it. So it was a nice marriage. So they were very synergistic goals. So while Eric talked about the goals of education and those are, we're going to pursue those, we're looking at this as a workforce initiative and an industry-supportive initiative. We're going to be offering, the programming that's going to be offered at the CTE center will be programming that supports industry that's in our region now. So I use the ridiculous example always of no marine biology courses will be taught at the CTE center, at least I wouldn't expect that. So not only will they have those educational goals, we hope that unemployment and those types of metrics improve, too. You know, quite frankly, the areas that we visited, they had low unemployment and some workforce challenges, too, but the industry representatives we talked, we talked about, thank goodness that's here because that's a pipeline for my company that I need to grow. So there are a couple of goals that really support one another and I think we're all at the table working, you know, that collective vision.
Thank you. I got a quick question, building off Ms. Dockler's, but how many students are currently in the CTE programs or in a CTE course? And I guess what do you, do you see with being more, having more offerings and more options and better equipment, different programs, that you're going to have a large increase?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. It's, I will just start with, it's a duplicate count. We have some students that will take multiple CTE courses in a given year. I just actually sat through my oldest boy's freshman counselor conference today. He's enrolled in three CTE courses next year, so I'm real proud of him for doing that. But that count at the high school of last year was over 2,200 students that were enrolled in our CTE courses. Now, that's just about the same number of students that we have at Red River and Central total that enrolled in those schools. But again, it breaks down to be roughly about 72% of students that will take a CTE course from the Grand Forks Public Schools in any given year at the high school level, which is pretty impressive, again, the fact that those are all elective courses and they can choose to be there or choose not to be there. And there's a lot of other elective courses that are available for them. Of the largest school districts, Grand Forks, is significantly higher in terms of our students that will partake in CTE programs. And at the same time, it's, we have some space challenges. We have program medical careers that we have course offerings at not only Red River and Central, but also our rural schools as well through some online offerings. We turn away kids from those programs each year because we don't have the physical space or the staffing to support them. And I think that that's a program that obviously fits in with our post-secondary partners and regional needs and industry employers. And so that's a program that's at the top of the list for growing in this type of center concept.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Ms. Mikulak.
Thank you. Mr. Lund, I don't know if I missed, did you say energy and judicial sector at all? Are those groups that you're looking at engaging with or have you attempted and they've kind of shied away from the opportunity?
Ms. Mikulak, we have not considered judicial, I'll be honest with that. Energy has been a consideration and many of those are in the sort of manufacturing sector. So I think we have identified some companies on our list that are identified as energy. I gave you the, I guess, the more predominant sectors in terms of title. So we'll be inviting a number of, a number of companies that I haven't, you know, listed by category to those industry presentations. Number one, we want to make sure that all industry knows what we're doing and the goals of it. And, you know, if there's something we're missing in terms of their needs, we want to learn about that. And there may be organizations that, well, the programming might not be a perfect fit within the new center itself. You know, maybe there, some of the programming, the virtual center can help support that. So there's a space consideration and there may be competition for that space. But also there may be organizations that feel strongly and are civic-minded that will want to support this in one fashion or another. So obviously from that, so we want to get in front of those companies as well.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is just thinking about the governor and the lieutenant governor's initiatives in the energy-focused sector and bringing in some pretty innovative energy projects across the state of North Dakota. Those are going to require some specialized, you know, technical employees and workers that I know from my work, we are lacking in North Dakota. And that's of huge concern for some of the projects that are looking to come into the state. So I think it is an opportunity when you take a look at the unique opportunities at UND with the EERC being the only center of its type in our state, having the only law school in our state here, that there might be some unique opportunities as a pipeline for those two areas. And then I just wanted to follow back up to Mr. Weber's question about sustainability of funding. So what I heard was, you know, one-time funding, potentially private-public one-time funding. I heard federal funding for staffing. But there are those soft carrying costs over the long term that we as a school district are dealing with. There are certainly ways to get commitments from not only development, but rolling those into long-term commitments. I think an industry advisory council is absolutely a way to go. And you can look at, you can look at the petroleum engineering department on UND's campus as a model for how they drew industry into their program and have used that to capitalize long-term sustainable funding for a lot of the equipment that they house over there today. But that is a concern that without kind of a solid understanding and a commitment from private industry in some way, shape, or form to help the sustainment of the center, the equipment, innovation going forward, it's really hard to say yes to something even if we had all the one-time funding upfront. Because looking down the pipeline, the school district, I mean, if our enrollment numbers are on track, we're going to need another building. We have other buildings that need a lot of funding and we're going to have to continue to accrue that. And 3% a year isn't going to be enough to add multiple additional new buildings on our own. So it really does have to be a walking forward and not just a one-time tranche with in-kind participation on the back end because we'll have to shore up funds somewhere. So those are just the things that I think about.
Thank you. Let's go, let's go, he's close, and we'll give Mr. Carpenter first then.
I just question for those that visited other centers, did they talk at all about how they did the sustainability of, you know, how they kept the program? Where were their sources of revenue that they received and kind of what kind of percentage they were?
Sure, we can probably all share in this. Ohio and Oklahoma were quite envious. Both of the CTE centers in those states, the ones we visited are political subdivisions unto themselves, so they had a milo of the authority. So I don't know that that's applicable here, so probably put them, put them aside pretty quickly. We did visit Sioux Falls and they, I think they have a model that would be similar to what we're looking at. So it really was a school district project. I think I would compare it to how Bismarck stood up their CTE center or career academy about 20 years ago. But they do have industry partnerships. One of the things we learned even from those districts that had, they were their own political subdivisions, they had strong industry partnerships. As a matter of fact, this application gives preference and priority points to those centers that will have strong industry engagement with the center as well as strong K-12 post-secondary alignment and synergies as well. So we intend to do that. So I guess the model is, it's pretty common to have industry provide equipment, particularly because that's the equipment that they're going to need to work on. But there is absolutely a place for ongoing funding from a sponsorship standpoint for different programs. So those would be something that we'll pursue, certainly.
Mr. Ripley?
I was just going to mention, Mr. Carpenter using our Grand Forks Area Center as an example. So the eight-member school districts all pay a membership fee to be part of that center and receive those courses. It's an investment for those school districts, but really when you look at it, the cost of hiring their own individual teacher, you know, pales in comparison then to the course offerings that are being provided to them. So there is some funding that we obtain to help come up with that local share then to match the state contribution on an annual basis for that. And that would be a model that is pretty common with other centers around the state of North Dakota, at least.
Is that membership fee based on, sorry about that, Chris. Is that membership fee based on size of school district? So they, based on the number of kids they may have participate?
Correct, absolutely, yep. It's so, it's, the format that we use currently is it's based off the overall total enrollment, nine through 12 in the high school. Other models take it looking at a per-pupil enrollment fee. So if you are enrolled in a welding course, you pay X amount of dollars to have a student in that welding course. So again, a couple of different models to use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sometimes when you skate on the fourth line, you just don't get on the ice when you think you're going to. But by God, I'm on the ice. Just a follow-up, Mr. Ripley, I was going to address this with the group. If there's anybody thinking is this really a necessity, what I would do is invite you to, as you had stated, go to Red River. I'm sure Mrs. Rokamp in the health or Mr. Nelson in the automotive would be more than willing to give you a tour and to show you what it is that they deal with on a day-to-day basis. Amazing educators, wonderful programs, very limited space. So I would invite anyone that has some second thoughts, is this really necessary? You could see the realities of what it is that they deal with. And then the follow-up question, you have eight districts, smaller districts that work with us. Do you see any need to be concerned about reaching that minimum number for the state in order to qualify for this? Do you think you're well on track?
Thank you, Mr. Val, for the question. No, I think we're well on track. We've had the same eight-member school districts participate in our virtual area center since we started it 10 years ago. And really, we think using that model as the foundation to build this center off of, again, talking to superintendent Morrison Thompson, they've received some online courses for us, but there's certain courses that they know their students are interested in if we have the facility and the space to be able to provide it to them. And so I don't see a problem working with those schools. We just want to make sure that there's a fit for them as well, specifically with how is it tie into the regional industries within their communities. I think that's a key component for us.
Outstanding. Thank you.
All right. Since this is a discussion, if there's anyone has a last comment on that, otherwise we'll look to move on here so we, for the sake of time. Anybody got some great closing words?
Mayor, I would say ongoing discussions between now and October 1 and December 1 with the group before we make any final judgments, but I could see, foresee a couple more meetings like this.
Sounds great. Well, thank you. We're going to move on to strategic, community-wide development briefing and discussion. So, Mr. Phelan, are you taking away?
I am. I only have three. I only have three slides, but I'm going to just give you a heads up. Number one, on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, you approved two tax incentive projects before the pandemic in JR Simplot's freezer and peer development. Here goes mixed-use development and then the four mixed-use developments during the pandemic. And so that's almost $200 million of investment in our community, so I want to say thank you for that. And just give you a highlight, kind of where we see the community going. Sorry, this map doesn't show very well. Just want to highlight in the downtown area, I would say, thanks for all the, we've got some great developments that are ongoing that are going to open up this fall that I think are going to be game changers. By the one more project that we're going to see in the downtown, I can foresee in the near future is a hotel, boutique hotel project that we're doing some additional analysis now. So when I, when I look at Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Mikulak, I could see a redevelopment project coming forward to our local government advisory committee on there, I would say in the downtown area. Also, on the campus of UND, there's some mixed-use developments that they're working on. You guys approved the Memorial Village project, but I could see further mixed-use developments. You didn't have to approve this, but they're renovating $100-plus million in their student housing through Johnson Controls, public-private partnership. Obviously, that's not going to be taxed, so they didn't come to that. But they're changing their mindset on how they're going to do something, trying to get to the end quicker and how you get to the end quicker. You sell some assets over a 50-year term and you get private investment in that. So just so you know, there's a lot going on at campus and I can see some more opportunities beyond Memorial Village. I think the one thing that we, the mayor and I and the council think we could engage, there is this university avenue corridor study that went on. It was with the Knight Foundation and Councilmember Dockler, I think, was served on that. So, you know, if you look at the, I think the two kind of hubs of the downtown and UND are doing well and there's some discussion about along the way, how do we create a better corridor and a more tight corridor between the UND and downtown? And I think that we need to inject you as part of that conversation with the discussion on the redevelopment of West and then how to move forward with Winship and Wilder. And I think you should be incorporating that neighborhood school discussion, and that's probably one thing that we haven't done as well. So I would think that would be one study we could help engage on that particular discussion. This is up here in our agri, I'm going to call it our agri business park up here, and Keith and I have spoken, is that we probably need to get a fancier name than that. So if you drive to Jamestown, you need to drive through the Spiritwood Ag Park. I think we have something going on right now. So what we're seeing right now is a lot of game-changing, transformational investments transformational investments in the agri business sector in this area that we may see, that I would see that you, you would be coming to both the local government advisory committee if we do, are able to land some of the opportunities out there. The one thing we are, we're probably in a sweet spot for agriculture, as we know. However, I think we're being seen as, how do we add value in it? And so, you know, beyond, you know, right now, we have Philadelphia macaroni up there. We have J R Simplotz, and we have Red River Valley, Red River Bio Refinery up there. But I could see some opportunities for other crops to add value up in this area, and I can see that happens sooner rather than later. So I want to give you a highlight on that. I want to highlight something that really was kind of under the scene, but this is Core Scientific, it's a data center. This is our new water treatment plant that we're awfully proud of. But we opened up an area in that area for industrial development. And thanks to the partnership with N C O D A, we were able to land $100 million data center in our community that is going to, I think, just be one of more to come. So that's, that's a huge investment for, for the community. As we move forward, on the housing side, we've had some interest in discussing this area. So this is Stephis, and this is the Walmart. The city put in infrastructure in this area. We were just talking about Tames Court in this area, about adding some housing. There's some movement to add some housing in this area. And I think that'd be a great opportunity to discuss with the, with the school board of how do we see, if we go move further west in that area with further housing, how can we be served with schools on the other side of interstate? Or do we want to look at other opportunities moving forward? One other development, you know, Wells Concrete shut down here, and now True North and Coast materials have purchased the remaining sites. So at one time, we thought, oh my goodness gracious, Wells is leaving. And it's probably one, it's been a good move, really, because we have two engaged businesses that want to continue to redevelop in that area. So if you drive out to the water plant and look at Core Scientific and what they're doing out there, that's probably another project I could see him coming back to local government advisory to redevelop that as a core industry and building off of what they've already invested in that particular area of town. Want to talk about, we, we are working hard on interchange with the state of North Dakota at DeMers and 42nd. So we're hoping to receive funding in that, if, in the very near terms, that we can move forward with that project. And that would be to move that project forward. The other large project that we're currently doing in E I S is at the interchange down here on the, on the far. And that would be, we call it 47th Avenue Interchange, but it's probably more like, you know, 47, probably plus somewhere that we're looking at. That we're in the midst of an E I S. And that's really to relieve some pressure on 32nd and also to open up future development on the west and east side of, of the interstate going to the south. And we know that'll have impacts on, on the school district moving forward. The other developments we're really working on, you can't see this, but this is all true earlier tonight, just because we're the conduit for their tax-free bonds. You know, Alter moved forward with $530 million in a bond sale, $360 million for the new hospital, $170 million in refinancing. So we sell a lot of bonds in the city of Grand Forks, but I'm just telling you right now, that's probably the biggest bond sale we've ever had in the, in the city of Grand Forks. So that's what Alter is moving forward with. And I think that's a really great sign that they're going to go to the market and say, this community is going to grow and is dynamic, and you should, you should invest in Grand Forks. So you should know that. That's kind of going to be a sign of what, what the world thinks of Grand Forks. The two areas that we're working on is, is the Columbia Mall in this area. So we're looking at redeveloping with that property owner. And so we imagine that as a new mixed-use development, not what it looks like today. And so hopefully, we can come back with a really extraordinary redevelopment. Again, that would require some action with the local government advisory committee. And one of the things, you know, we've kind of crept along. The other one is the Holiday Inn site, which is up on Gateway Drive. But just those two properties, the Columbia Mall, that was valued, and this has really impacted the school district. It was valued in 2017 at $32 million. Today, we have it at, valued at $7 million. So you can see where it's, it's really, the value of the Columbia Mall is really the land and the infrastructure is all that's valued at this point. The Holiday Inn, or the, the original Holiday Inn on Gateway Drive in 2017 was worth $4 million, today it's worth $1 million. So really, similar to the Columbia Mall, all the value is, is the land and the infrastructure running. So we got to start redeveloping these properties and so that we can get them back on the taxes so that we can have higher growth in the middle levy that I think will really help, help the school district as we move forward. Next slide, John. I want to highlight this one. So this is 62nd and South Washington. This is, we're going to call it Quarry Development. The city council has not said move forward with this. But if you want to look at our growth strategy beyond that area where I showed, you know, near the north side Walmart area, this is another development area, but on to the south that craters want to move forward with. And I think, number one, you should know this is a, is an area that we want to look at developing. The other thing we've talked to Quarry Development is that the school has land on the other side of Washington. And so I think they're interested not only in engaging where a lot of families are going to be living in this area, but also engaging on, on looking at where you own land on the other side of Washington and how this fits in. So I think from a development perspective, they'd want to include you as part of this proposed development. This will be back at the city council in September, and we'll look at early-on infrastructure investment, like a pump station in this area that would open up this, this half section of land as far as development. Next, next slide. This is just a video, we clipped a video, and really, this is what they're looking at. And this is a full build-out in that area. And you can see to the right is Washington. You can see the plan stay to the lower right. But this is what they're looking at as a development. And so there's going to be a lot of homes in this area moving forward with an amenity in the middle with a, with a pond. So really, this really includes the developer, the city of Grand Forks, the park district, and the school district. I think really need to engage in these kinds of developments so that before we move forward, you kind of understand where the growth is going in advance. But we are running out of lots. If you look, if you drive down 62nd Avenue South, in the next three years, in kind of that primary in and around Washington, we're going to be out of lots. And so this is really to move the community to one mile south. The reason why we kind of run to the one, our flood protection boundary is to Maryfield Road. And so that's where the city is going to grow, to Maryfield Road. And then we, we're obviously trying to push west to, to our diversion judge. So you should be aware of that. And I think as part of our onus, not only to engage you on development projects, but also engage you on residential developments, I think we need to engage you in the third part, you know, workforce development and also where we're developing some of these areas where there's going to be lots of kids so that we include you up front as opposed to at the end. So Mayor, with that, that's, that's kind of a quick highlight of where we're at. And I think the nice part is, hopefully, near the end of this pandemic, that we have this much development going on in our community. And this is a lot of what we've done.
Thank you, Todd. I think the, the real story here is that the city is all in. We're going to be aggressive, and we're looking at growth. Not uncontrolled growth, but nice, steady, stable growth. If you look at what's happened with the school district, seeing declines or small, single-digit growth over the years, it's just not possible to sustain buildings with that. And I think in a, in a large, you know, had we been doing a lot of these projects a long time ago and seen that growth, and it's not just property value, it's, it's enrollment, and it's putting kids in the seats. That's why, you know, we're excited to see some of the business growth because that brings jobs, brings more kids, more students. And on top of that, we've, we've had housing ones which bring construction jobs, but that isn't necessarily long-term jobs. So we're excited to, to see the direction that we're, that it's going. I just, I think we, we also realize the nuance when the, the school board has to look at going back to the votes, voters for a 10 mil increase and then looking at T I F projects mixed in there. So we understand that, that it's, that it's a, it's a tough situation, but I think we have to continue to educate that we're building aggressively and we're building growth for the future. So there, it's a nuance in there, you know, they're not completely tied to each other, but it's hard because you're always going to get the statements of, well, why are you approving a T I F project when you, you know, we're trying to go for a mil increase? Well, we're trying to avoid this problem for the people that are sitting in our chairs 20 years from now. So with that, I guess I'd like to open it up for any discussion on, on that part as well.
Ms. Mikula, please.
It's, I mean, I'm all for growth and development, but, you know, in terms of, we're talking about all this, but there was no real timeline mentioned. And certainly, we're not going to flop down a bunch of subdivisions in a five-year period of time. So is the, is the city position in terms of how you're going after west of the interstate versus further expansion south? Is there a primary and a secondary move? Or are these really all happening simultaneously? My reason for asking is from a school district standpoint, we're facing, one, funding for our current building. You know, we have a few buildings that are in need of some dire attention and potentially new build. And those areas are heavily populated with families already. So we have to take care of those. Taking care of the rest of the buildings that may, in the next five to 10 years, need more attention. And then potentially, when we're talking about this, I'm, I'm getting very implicit tones of, you know, developers always like to have a school because that's very attractive for families to move into an area. So I'm, I'm getting some inference of two new school buildings, one west, one south, and dare I say, maybe an additional middle school to somehow split capacity. Not speaking for the district because I'm not, and I'm not an enrollment expert, but that's where I, I go. So is there, back to my question, is there a primary, secondary? How are you all viewing, you know, infill redevelopment, like the near north neighborhood? That has been sort of a state of rehab over the years.
Yeah, well, we're, we're currently going through our 2050 Land Use Subcommittee Plan, which you're going to tie into even what we're doing today with that. And that's the discussions that we're having right now. And a lot of that, unfortunately, we can put down on paper and say where we want things to grow without us actually going in and annexing something on the west or on the south. You're not going to, that's really the only lever we have to really spark that type of growth. I, I think that, to try to answer your question, I think that that large one on the south is going to be phased in. And I think that's a discussion that, you know, the school board's going to have to have is what makes the, you know, where's, what, does it make sense to build a school with that? I think that's, you know, the developer can only drive that so much. But we're kind of, you know, we build a wastewater pump station to the, to the west closer to the interstate, and that developer decides not to, to develop that area. So we've made an investment there that's just sitting there. So it's difficult for the city. We do as much, you know, the best that we can. But in the end, it's, a lot comes up to the developer and when they're ready to go. So when they're coming to projects that they're ready to go on, we've got to, we've got to kind of move those along as best we can and hope that we can find that solution on the schooling as we go. But I think that's the exact reason we're having these types of meetings is, is to try to align that better. I don't know if I answered your question, but a lot of words at least.
No, I mean, certainly, right. It's the incentives that you can offer and how, you know, and I think, I think what I'm hearing is, it's as yet to be determined. These are the wishes and the desires. And then it's probably going to take conversations with Dr. Brenner and Chris Arnold and our enrollment, you know, guru, projectionist to sit down and figure out, you know, what makes the most sense from, and, you know, Scott too, but he's out of my eyesight, so I didn't mention him. But, you know, our business manager and all the folks who can say, you know, strategically, this is where, as a district, we, we think we want to go considering what our enrollment looks like in these areas and potentially the need for additional overflow. So, no, I, I think further conversations are definitely the right approach. And having these start now is very helpful to know what, what the vision is.
I don't know, Mr. Veen, if you wanted to add anything? I know you're on that committee as well and been involved.
Yeah, please. I, I think you make great comments, I agree with that. But, you know, for, for us to grow, they have to have infrastructure. And so you have to have your water availability, you got to have your stormwater, you've got to have your wastewater. And so we have the ability to manage that because we also don't like to have leapfrog development or urban sprawl that you don't need. It should be planned. So I, I think looking, working really closely together, we can look at how we accomplish cost-effective schools. At the same time, we look at cost-effective infrastructure that meets the growth patterns that people want.
Mr. Rippel, please.
Ms. Mikula, thanks for bringing those comments forward. I have been a frequent skeptic of, of this development. I'm, I'm resistant to urban sprawl, unnecessary sprawl. At the same time, we need more housing in our community. And there's much that I like about the, the design of this development. But in addition to the physical infrastructure, we need the social infrastructures too. So having these kinds of discussions and, and getting feedback from the school board would be very helpful in, in making determinations about what our, our development should be. So it was kind of an unseen aspect of, of this meeting that I hadn't anticipated.
Yeah, I mean, and if I might, you know, secondary to what incentives and where do you want to develop and how do you control development? You know, the question comes again back to sustainability. How do you continue to sustain the infrastructure that you're putting into place? The school building that goes there? And, you know, keep in mind, as you all know, our, our taxing authority ends at, you know, the mills and the property tax values. That's really where we stop. So to do it in a measured way so that the city and the school district aren't coming down on the taxpayers back-to-back to cover some of these investments, although needed, sometimes not appreciated by the community at large when you're asking for them to pay it out of their, their pocket, you know, when the tax increase comes or sales tax comes to sustain, sustain it. That's really where I think the, the rub is when the district's coming and asking for, for 10 mills or referendum on the heels or just shortly ahead of, you know, we need to do this additional levy to sustain some of the infrastructure that we're building in the south or the special assessments on some of these new homes being put into place. If we then come and ask for mills on top of it, they already have a hefty tax bill that they're carrying from that infrastructure. So those are the things that I then think about in terms of timing to make sure that it all, you know, we're aware of what you're doing and you're aware of what we're thinking of, I think makes good sense.
In fact, if there was some way for us to develop a mechanism when we're making decisions about large developments like this to include feedback from the, the school district about whether this is going to work for them, what, what, what their interests are, that would be very helpful for me in, in my decision-making about these.
Yeah, and I know, I know that developer did, did go in front of the, the park district as well. But to Ms. Mikula's point, I think the city is in a good shape financially, and it, we can certainly absorb quite a lot of growth and infrastructure investments without a property tax increase. So I think we're going to be in good shape at least for a while on that front. So timing things is, you know, is great. But I think we'll be, we'll be okay for at least the foreseeable future.
When is the land use survey closed? And when might we expect to see those results?
Mr. Veen, do you know when that gets wrapped up? We've got quite a lot of work left.
Can you say that again?
When is the land use survey? I know there was a public comment that was being collected. Do you know when that closes and when the report might be available?
You know, I don't recall that offhand. I, I have a separate meeting next week to, to get into some of the details. So I apologize, but I think it's geared just toward the end of the year to be done, if I know, if I remember it best. But we'll, I couldn't tell you for sure what the date is.
Perhaps that might be impetus for a joint meeting again, just as we talk about the, the different pieces of feedback.
Yeah, and I think the best thing, you know, we talk about the surveys have input into it while it's being developed, not, of course, after it's done. So that we, we get that in there and we start addressing that as part of this land use planning, without question.
All right, Ms. Shab.
Just anecdotally, there were many people who reached out to me after our failed referendum saying that, well, and before, actually, saying that their children on the south end are driving, they're having to drive their children quite a ways to Discovery Elementary School. And so their concern was, let's build another school on the south end. And with our failed north-end referendum, I worry about having development that requires families to drive even further to school because that, that's a, that's been a concern on, I actually, anecdotally, have heard that if we had asked for a south-end school, there would have been a very strong support for that. So I, I am concerned because we didn't, we weren't successful with that north end. And this, we toured Valley last Monday, and we're starting school in a week. And those kids are going to be in 90-degree-plus rooms, temperature-wise. And so I think it's really important for us when we get to the next discussion on the 10 mills that we need that city support to get this 10-mil levy passed because we're putting our kids and our teachers at risk in some of these buildings. So it's great to think new and, and, you know, down the road, but we've got to do something about what's happening right now. So that, that's kind of no question here, but just kind of, so that that's kind of no question here but just kind of I think communication with the city and the school is is key.
All right yep we'll move on then where they lost the last agenda item is oh the school district now September 29th 2021 10 mil building vote briefing and discussion so is it Mr. Arnold?
Hey Chris could I just provide some introductory remarks and then I'll turn it over to you thank you for that sorry about that Mayor for interrupting I just wanted to give just a little historical context to why we're going back to the voters for for a 10 mil increase on property taxes on September 28th Dr. Schaub already referenced that our two-question referendum wasn't successful on June 22nd but we were encouraged needing a 60% threshold vote a positive vote we're at about 54% for the 10 mills certainly much much lower on the first question but but about 10 10 to 12 years ago we had a community patron who was really pushing the issue indicating that the school district was levying 10 extra mills for its building fund so at one time we had 20 mills that we were able to levy and that person took it all the way to the Supreme Court and so the district that was levying 20 mills from 1969 up until about 10 years ago has lost that revenue over the last 10 to 12 years so at about 2.5 million a year that's $25 million that we don't have in our building fund that would have actually taken care of our catastrophic issues that we've had over the last six years so over the last six years we've taken out of our general fund 11 and a half million dollars just writing checks paying for boilers paying for infrastructure paying paying for bricks falling off of buildings as a result because we we don't have that that building line item fund we actually have it but it's only 10 mills the additional 10 mills would would be a real win for the school district so I know some people think we have a spending problem but let me just offer a couple of other opportunities that we've instituted over the last three years first of all I can't take credit for what what the state has done for us over the next biennium that's a 1% in year one 1% in year two for foundation aid payments that equals 1.3 million dollars that doesn't cover our raises that barely covered our steps as our as our staff moved from year one to year two or year 14 to year 15 etcetera so we went through a budget reduction exercise to do our own work internally and we realized a $4 million reduction going into this school year and it wasn't without some pain we don't quite know what the slight property tax increase is going to be on the home valuation to see what kind of revenue that will generate for us but really over the last three years it's been been fairly flat you know we're not in the years where it used to be 68% growth that was really helpful for us Scott Bergy our business manager worked with Representative Mark Sanford and a few other legislators changed the impact aid funding formula so we would realize all of that money instead of that money being deducted from our foundation aid payment so we'll start to see starting starting this this year an increase of $350,000 in our general fund and that will grow over the next six years and then we'll see a realization of collecting up to $3 million each year for our military students who are affiliated affiliated with Grand Forks Air Force Base we eliminated our early retirement program that's going to be a $400,000 savings each year over the next four years and then collectively cumulatively after that four years that'll be more like about a 1.5 million dollar savings we've hired a grant writer who I failed to recognize in the in the first part of our meeting when we were talking about the Career Academy Tanya Schleicher is going to be the lead grant writer for that work she's been in the district almost two years starting in October she's already brought $6 million into the school district as a result of her work and we have a new partnership with Altru so over the next 10 years we have a three-quarters of million dollar partnership with them and so we're doing work looking at non-traditional revenue for a stagnant funded school district and there's a lot more information I'd like to share but I just want the people in this room the people watching at home to know that we're looking at alternative funding sources for our school district so a successful referendum on September 28th would give us room to breathe that's not going to give us room to catch up but it would give us some room to breathe and with that I'll turn it over to our Buildings and Grounds Director Chris Arnold thank you Chris.
All right thank you Dr. Brenner so Dr. Brenner would wanted me to present to both the council and the board tonight a look at what a 10 mil referendum would possibly fund in the years one through five and as you're going to see years one through five aren't aren't real pretty we have approximately 790 differing maintenance projects that value at 260 million dollars if we take that number and we spread that across our square footage we are talking about $152 per square foot these deficiencies are not things that are I guess considered luxury items such as accessibility ADA compliance for example life safety systems such as mass notification fire alarm systems secure entryways HVAC system systems as Cynthia alluded to we will be starting school next week with the potential of having a day just like today we were in the upper 90s I can tell you from visiting the schools this morning Wilder Elementary was well over 80 degrees at 7:00 AM this morning before we had full sun on that school and that was with doors open trying to get fresh air into that building and we had kids showing up in the next half hour to have breakfast there so to you know I guess to put it real bluntly we're we're in a really bad place right now as a district and we need a we need some help we need to invest into our buildings to kind of go further into a review of what kind of maintenance needs we have we have everything from roofing to HVAC to fire alarm systems and sprinklers it's not well-known but not many of our buildings are actually fully sprinkled in fact we have 10 buildings that have either no sprinkle or only partial sprinkled in fact Red River High School which has a student population right now well over 1,000 kids is less than a quarter sprinkled in that building not only is that a safety issue for our kids but it's also a liability for our asset that we're trying to protect so if we have an event there you know we're hopeful that we wouldn't lose much of that building but again this is a major risk that the district is taking and on that same note when we talk about safety and security for our kids mass notification along with fire alarm upgrades we still have buildings that struggle to hear not only fire alarms but also notifications that come from the front office this could be something as simple as being queued down to the office but it could also be in the event that something is happening in the building and we don't want people to leave their rooms it's it just the list goes on and on we talk about electrical I know the school board got to go visit Valley last week I understand that they got to take a look at the electrical support systems and some of the HVAC systems that support that building that is not unique to Valley Schrader Middle School which is on the south end of Grand Forks on 32nd Avenue has electrical systems not quite as old but are in the same dilapidated state that would require a full replacement if we had a failure in those systems going further in I I didn't I don't want to read off every one of these slides but I guess maybe the resounding message here is we have a lot of needs at in varying buildings and varying forms at our high school Central High School right now is is in need of new skylights fire alarm systems like we talked about secure entries the latest development that we have right now is there's the granite steps that faced first fourth and then the city hall facade actually is right on the other side of the wall here have started to settle and in fact the steps that were on Fifth Street those actually failed a few years back we are right now working on a project to take care of those steps we've actually had over two inches of settling that's brand new that's happened within the last month so we continue to have these items that come up that we can't plan for so it's it's really frustrating from a Buildings and Grounds Director standpoint to try to plan for projects when people ask what does year one through five look like I unfortunately I can't tell you what years one through five will be I can project what we want to spend money on but unfortunately it is likely that even with the 10 mil mil levy if it were to be successful at the end of September we would still be short funds to take care of all of the needs over at Central High School building further in we go into Red River High School we've made great strides at Red River on the HVAC front we have been able to take a lot of our CARES money and we have made major investments in air quality and improvement in that building because we were able to do one-for-one replacements which was effective with the dollars that we received but yet we continue to still have investments that are needed there as you can see we're still dealing with some original air handling equipment at that building and as Dr. Brenner had talked about Cushman Field and track and ground stand is in dire need of an upgrade we are we are beyond 10 years the track has begun to wear away where we're actually seeing concrete and the field turf itself is at end of life these are not only eyesore for the community but they're also safety concerns for our students and our ground stand along with that as well are at end of life and we need to replace those things but we again unfortunately don't have enough money to take care of them South Middle School while it was built in 1998 also continues to have a lot of or has a lot of items that have come up we've had major EFS failures over the gymnasium and over the cafeteria these failures are now resulting in block failure unfortunately we had a project put together but couldn't afford it this past year it was to repair the EFS and actually cover it up and protect it and come up with a long-term solution due to other needs at other buildings we were unable to fund that project there is some good teaching and learning things that are you know projected at the school as well that would improve that building that are noted you know noticed on that last item with the addition of pod you know the different classrooms in the end of the pods and then the list continues to go on Schrader Middle School I want to share a little story I've been with the district for five years and Schrader Middle School is one of the first schools that actually went to go tour and I grew up in Grand Forks my whole life and you know I didn't know a lot about Schrader because I went to South Junior High at the time but I got to take a tour with one of the administrators and I got to go down to a special needs room that's located over in the sixth grade addition so I don't know if anybody's families are attuned to that I went into a special needs room and and kind of got to know the teacher and the teacher and the administrator kind of took me around and kind of showed me what was going on and they they wanted to show me where they were taking the kids to be changed so these these kids that are in this classroom require one-on-one attention in the bathroom so they were taking these kids over into a closet that technically is full of supplies mechanical equipment where there's no running water and changing these kids in this space and it's really disheartening that that's an acceptable level of treatment for our kids and it's been a project that's been on our list but unfortunately when we start to pit boilers and heat for 1,000 kids in a building we're pitting that against special needs against accessibility issues against electrical issues against roofing issues the the stack of cards gets to be extremely high and really overwhelming so so and then we have Valley Middle School as a the school board can tell you this school is 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 in need a lot of of a lot of things some of the things that I didn't actually put on here are some of the programmatic issues that the school wrestles with is in order for kids to be able to move back and forth between the wings of the building effectively and also have that ADA accessibility for those bathrooms and then in the elementaries we have 10 elementary schools we have a variety of failing issues any of them are from HVAC control issues to entire HVAC failures Ben Franklin Elementary School I think it was last year we actually had a steam failure underneath one of the classrooms and the classroom floor got so hot that the kids couldn't actually sit on the floor we we need to invest in these buildings not only for just the sustainment of the building but also for the safety of those kids Discovery Elementary and while it is brand new relatively brand new in the last five years we continue to need to invest into that property Millan Overlay is coming due on those parking lots over there and we continue to have higher enrollment at that site so we need to invest in that property J. Nelson Kelly which is like located right next to Schrader we've got windows HVAC systems electrical systems Kelly is right along with Ben Franklin kind of in that same era of school that requires a lot of upgrades and is going to require a significant amount of investment Lake Agassi is on this we did do an HVAC upgrade at Lake Agassi back in the early to mid 2000s but unfortunately that system doesn't talk to our greater system and you're going to see that on some of these where we're replacing HVAC control systems and that's to make us more operationally efficient and work work better as a as a district so we can be more effective with those dollars Phoenix Elementary we have drop-off and pickup issues if you've been in that neighborhood Viking Elementary again fire alarm secure entries and really what we're getting down to is we have a lot of needs and I and I do want to point out here on Winship the replace HVAC systems was replace HVAC control systems that part got missed on there we are going to be looking at our HVAC replacement after about 10 more years but either way I think one of the important things that also needs to be talked about in this forum is that now the school district has had to start to close facilities because we're unable to maintain them Red River High School no longer has a pool the pool filtration system has multiple failures in it not only in the filtration tank but also in the piping that's supplied out to the pool so the district made the decision to close that now most recently we have closed the Central High School pool and this is due to the failure of the moisture barrier that surrounds that building and prevents the moisture from the pool escaping out into the main building and in order to prevent further damage that we can't afford it was decided in the best interest of the district that we closed that pool so our swim teams are now working are actually swimming out of Hislop Sports Center that's a lot of information.
Well tell us the bad news.
Yeah everybody said it was going down so.
Yeah I guess I don't know how to pivot from from that but Ms. Mikulow perfect.
So this is a question that I asked Chris in advance so there's a deferred maintenance number that's around approximately 60 million maybe a little more than 60 million and then this number is 260 million so Chris can you explain the delta there and and how to differentiate between deferred maintenance and what we're talking about here?
Yeah so there's been a to Shannon's point there has been a lot of different numbers that have been thrown around the number that you see up here the 260 million dollars it's actually about 261 that number does not include programmatic improvements at a building when we talk about programmatic improvements we're talking about expansions additions potentially new sites so we pulled those numbers away and we also pull away the going through a building and modernizing it so like if we think about a Kelly Elementary going through that building and stripping all of the walls down starting over getting new electrical systems IT systems all of those support systems in there we get down to this number now if we add all those items in we're actually sitting at a number that's well over 400 million but that number's not realistic because if you move your cards to one side and say yep we're gonna build a new Valley or we're going to build new Viking and you know you know demolish the old Viking well that eliminates a whole bunch of deferred maintenance and it kind of shuffles the clamshells around a little bit so it's really hard to kind of narrow it in so this is the way that I I could most I could speak to you guys the most and hopefully not create too much confusion because it is it's very complex because it's very dynamic it it just depends on where you want to invest and how you want to press forward.
Mayor I think because it's hard to ask you I think what the school district is trying to get across is there's big needs this will go in incremental ways towards it they sure would like the city of Grand Forks to help support this mission as we said schools are really important so it's one thing to say it the other thing is to seek action on it I think the other groups they'd like is that we got Keith Lund here on behalf of the Economic Development Corporation our friend Barry Wilferstein here from the chamber but I think they want the business community behind this too they want the community behind this they do need 60% they were like 55% last time and the last time we had a major vote on sales tax we got to almost 75% and so I think that's what could happen but I think what they really want is to have an appreciation of the challenges the school district has and if it doesn't get approved I wouldn't want to be the administrator to try to figure out what comes next so I think that's really what they're here for to get the information out to the Herald and others but also to have the community really behind that this is needed for us to keep moving forward and and without a positive vote it's going to be hard to and I think it seemed like there wasn't a lot of pushback on the on the 10 mills people wanting to use use your S R here's I remember the translation use your S R first then do the 10 mills and then come back later on a larger referendum once you've figured out the first two steps and I think that's what's in front of us right now that you're going to use the S R funds you're gonna you're gonna ask for this 10 mills and then at some point there may be another ask but let's get past the first two steps so we can even start talking about the third so that's kind of what we're here is get the information out and just to say how important this is to consider this in advance of that vote and I think that's what Chris and Dr. Brenner is trying are trying to get across to everybody. And I think that's what Chris and Dr. Brenner are trying to get across to everybody in our community, including the city of Grand Forks.
Mr. Veen.
Yeah. I appreciate the presentation you guys made today. I think the biggest issue is sell the problem, sell the problem. And then the solutions will come about and get approved, but certainly identifying these in this way was helpful for me personally to kind of grasp it and to support the needs that you guys are having. Thanks.
I'll just add, you know, I think in some ways, it feels like Chris presented a very doomsday aspect of the school district. What we're looking forward to is the opportunity that our school district has to offer in teaching and learning and how infrastructure can help support that in a variety of different ways. Or, in our case, how it helps hinder it in some ways and how we can ask for help. Mr. Phelan, I appreciate the nod to, you know, looking forward and what the school district needs. And I would go a step further to say, I don't think we are looking for support. I know that we are looking for support. And, you know, I would certainly ask the city council to, and EDC, to, you know, work with their boards and councils to formally support the school district moving forward. I think it adds great value to us as a collaborative body and working together with our partners that it showcases that we desperately need a 10 mil. And that, you know, it's certainly something that would help our district move forward in the right direction. So, you know, certainly, if you're willing to, I know that that would be a great community partnership that we can agree that if schools are the foundation, here's what we need to move that forward.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Phelan, what's the most effective way for the city council to express this level of support? Is it a resolution? Is it just a motion? What do we do?
Yeah, I think we would, we could probably take, I know we're missing a few members here, so we could probably bring this to the next city council meeting and further discuss it and then have a motion or a resolution from that point, really, it'd be council's decision.
I hope that we will do that, then. Thanks.
We'll put it on the agenda.
Very good.
I think at this meeting, it'd be good to hear from not everyone's here, but to have a general consensus so that if we bring it, it's going to be received well, I think, too.
There's many very hopeful, optimistic things happening in the city. Fantastic development going on, but the health of a community has to be measured in large part by the way it treats its children. And this is indicating a problematic, if not a troubled, community, these issues. And as far as economic development, Mr. Lund, if we're attracting industry, business to our community, I think one of the things that business leaders look for is the quality of the schools, for their workforce, for their families, et cetera. So I hope that we could have that conversation about what might happen at the EDC board as well.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that the teachers and the quality of education that's come out of the school district, dealing even with these buildings and the disarray that they may be in, is pretty phenomenal. I think it's about time that the teachers have that support with the right proper facilities and the students have the right environments. You know, you sit here and you look at all these things and you think, how can we have a good growing town without having proper schools? And it's just, you sit here and you just, it's like, how do we get to where we are now? I mean, it's really hard to sit and look at it, but that's not going to help us. We need to look to the future and then solve some of these problems because it affects the region, it affects the kids' quality of their education. It's not something that is a punchline. It's real. It's serious. It just, I don't think I've been more disheartened in the time that I've been, the short time I've been mayor, by than looking at the situation that our school's in. So, I mean, I probably shouldn't have quibbed at the end, but, you know, sometimes you just get a light in the mood, but it's pretty tough to see, so.
Ms. Mikula.
Yeah, I don't want to end on such a drab note. I mean, something that I said to Ms. Pluksek at Valley last week, and this is very true, and I think it probably echoes throughout all of our campuses, but whenever I talk to teachers at a particular school that might be in rough shape, and I think Valley's one of those, they have the highest morale of any workforce that I've seen. I mean, they truly love everybody they work with, and they love their students, and they just admit, like, yeah, we need a new building. Like, it just, we need some help there. But everything else is great. So from, you know, the perspective of young kids, I mean, they don't necessarily remember the environment that they're in, the building itself. They remember the people in it, and they remember the way that those people made them feel and what they taught them while they're there. So I think that's something that Grand Forks does absolutely throughout the course of history. You know, they're able to say that they have, you know, the best and brightest teaching, some of the best and brightest. I think with, going back to timing, I mean, timing is so important for the school district and how we present what it is we're asking for and what's going on in terms of development. And so even more so, knowing that we have mills and a potential additional ask coming in the future, as we've talked about at school board meetings. I think understanding the city's direction as we pace through the next year is even more important so we don't get out ahead of ourselves and commit to making an investment in a part of the city that may not see the growth or may need, you know, may need a new facility sooner than we expect. But I think this was a really good opportunity to kind of lay it out there and show the financial situation that we're in in that, you know, there've been some great steps taken, you know, Scott's efforts with the federal aid, Dr. Brenner's efforts with Cushman Field and the public-private, you know, partnership that we have now with All True that was approved the other week. I mean, those are great steps towards solving some of our problems, and hopefully, they continue. So I think under the leadership we have, we definitely are moving in the right direction. We just have to make some tough decisions going forward this next year.
I thought you were going to leave it on a positive note, so who's got the positive side? Mr. Paul Messino, you got anything for us? Or Mr. Weigl?
I could tell you a story about how Mr. Ripley tried to get me to go out for wrestling, I think my eighth grade year, if you'd like. That's the only positive story I have.
All right. Maybe call me after the meeting, because now I want to know.
It didn't work, by the way. It only lasted a day or so.
I think the positive deal on all of the short journeys, we're still growing. We're still seeing a lot of kids coming, especially on the south end, you know, and I think in the future, I think the city is prone, or is poised to support us, and I think they will.
Mayor, we grew in the last 10 years at 1.2%, right? And so even though you were disappointed that it wasn't 62,000, we were at 59,000. So it shows we're a growing community in an area where there's some really great benchmarks, right? And we don't have oil here, right? So I think we've created a lot of growth in our community, so I think it's a pivotal time for us to stand together and move the community forward so that, and we've grown that 1.2%. If you looked at the previous decade, it was a lower percentage, it was under 1%. So I think our next 10 years to 2030 is probably going to be a markup greater than 1.2% growth. So let's act like we beat somebody and move the community ahead.
Well, with that, that was a, what do we got? Mr. Doofit, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very brief story. Prior to my serving on the board, I was in education. I was the associate principal of Valley Middle School. And one day, we had a student having a meltdown and having a really tough time. And our custodian, Rose Brosart, was in the area, and she knelt down. This is about the connections. She knelt down to the student and was very polite and very caring, and she said, would you like me to join you for lunch? And they said, yes. And they went to a table in a hallway away, had a very nice lunch, and I was so appreciative of what she had done. She goes by and she goes, you know, Chris, I had two lunches today. You owe me. But there's a caring adult in the school. Took care of a student who was struggling, and she was right there.
Oh, perfect. Well, I think we all have a teacher or a coach that helped us through our times growing up. So with that, I just want to thank everybody. Like I said, the city is committed to growth, and we're committed to helping, and we just really appreciate everybody's time. I think the school board's still got some work to do afterwards, so I might have to shimmy out the back door. But if anybody else has anything closing, Ms. Flynn, I don't know if you wanted to say anything on the school district's behalf or Dr. Brenner, but that's all I've got on the city side. Thank you, everybody.
No, I just, I would just echo that I think more collaboration and conversation is better than not, and I'm excited that we're continuing these conversations and starting someone new as well. So, thank you. Well, maybe take five minutes for transition to the school board meeting.
I don't know if we actually need a motion to adjourn, but if anybody wants a motion, Mr. Weigl, motions. We got a second from anybody?
Second.
A second from Ms. Doppler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned.